It's now 6:15. We will call the February Regular Board Meeting to order. 1.1, Roll Call. Let the record reflect that everybody except for Lori Dudley is here tonight. 1.2, Recognition of Visitors and Guests. Thank you to everyone in the crowd for attending tonight's meeting. 1.3 would be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 1.41, Public Participation. I don't believe we've had any this evening from anybody. 1.42, Recognition of Students, Staff, and Community. I got quite a few here, actually. Recognition Items. Congratulations to Heidi Meyer on being named the recipient of the Southwest Division Leadership Award by the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association. Congratulations to the Gymnastics Team on winning the Section A Gymnastics Meet and advancing to the Minnesota State Gymnastics Tournament. Again, the following individual gymnasts qualified for individual state competition as well. Lacey Thier All-Around, Marley Pomstertree Vault, Isabel LaZoue Vault, Jada Milbreth Bars &amp; Beam, Kennedy Thiner Beam. Congratulations as well to Taylor Hastings as being named Section 3A Jazz Coach of the Year by the Minnesota Association of Dance Teams. Congratulations to Hannah McNabb and Isaac Kinzer, this year's AAA Award winners at WHS. Over 30 students at Worthington Middle School participated in the Worthington Middle School Geography B, with Brayson Lowvan being awarded the champion and Preston Coomey second place. Thank you to Worthington Noon Kewanas for having guest readers in our Perry Elementary kindergarten classes. Congratulations to the Worthington Middle School Math Counts Team. They placed first place in Class AA in Marshall, along with earning the most improved team out of 10 schools considered for the special award. Worthington Middle School will be well represented at the Minnesota State MS Honor Choir this spring with six musicians being selected. We have the maximum number of students that can be selected, which is also very exciting, and good luck. Congratulations to Alondra Leon Flores for her being awarded the top forensic scholarship at Southwest Minnesota State University of Marshall. Alondra has participated in many different activities at WHS, including speech, BPA, theater, musicals, and more. She's had a very award-filled experience at WHS and we'll cheer her on in the bright career. And congratulations to the nine WHS Choral Department musicians that just returned from singing at MMEA over the weekend. Five of the singers were named to nine 10 honor choirs and four singers were named to all-state choirs. We'll give everybody a round of applause. Okay, 1.43, Presentation on the Middle School by Tony Bartman, Middle School Principal.
I have my sidekick Tessa Dirks with me, too. As we were talking a little bit about some restorative practice that we're doing at the middle school, I want all of you to think back to when you were in middle school and what that was like. When you ask people, quite honestly, a lot of times their experiences aren't real great and we're trying to make that better. So we are going to talk to you a little bit about Pride Academy. This is why we started Pride Academy. It gives a sense of belonging. It's an alternative to suspension. It's not meaningful when we do ISS and OSS. It's just putting them somewhere. This is a more proactive approach. Out-of-school suspension is viewed as a reward sometimes. Sometimes our kids were found doing other things when they were put in OSS. It can be a burden on parents. There's also that lack of supervision at home when parents have to work and that kind of thing. And the recidivism, which is not repeating what they do, is we want them to not do that, so. So this is our team. Our social workers and our counselors are part of our team and these are the things that they do. Our para, we have a para that runs the Pride Academy room. This is what we do as admin, our resource officer, and then our parents and guardians are also part of the process with this. They come to the exit presentation as well as being an active participant throughout the two days. So what is Pride Academy? So when a student makes a poor decision, which we all know they do, we do a two-day Pride Academy where they focus on respect, responsibility, and empathy. They get academic support. We do some behavior restoration. We also work on some personal development and we'll talk about some of these things in a little more detail. And then we do restorative conferences with principal, officer Tyler, or counselors and our para. One thing I'd like to add is that everyone is a little bit different, so it's individualized. There's more than one child in the Pride Academy. We really try to connect them and try to work through what they've done and then restore the hurt that they caused. So these are some of the topic examples of the lessons that they do while they're in Pride Academy. These are just a few of them. Relationships, resolving conflict, vaping, dangers of drugs, healthier relationships is a big one, empathy, tobacco use, and respect. So on the last day of Pride, after the kids had done lessons, throughout that time when they're meeting with counselors, our resource officer, myself, Tony, and that para that helps with Pride Academy, they're putting together a presentation. And the presentation, go ahead, Tony, includes these slides. And the slides are kind of pre-done except for where the kids add why they've been in the program. So that's the first slide. Then they reflect on what happened and why. And then they talk about if they're ever in that situation again, what could they do differently to get out of the situation or to find someone to help them. This slide is how their words and actions have had effects on not just them, but their family, the school, the staff, and sometimes the other person, because usually there's another person involved with what has happened. And in this slide, they reflect on what they've learned through the process. This slide becomes very good for the kids because they say a lot about empathy, which, you know, respect, empathy, and restoration are kind of the three parts of the Pride Academy. And it's surprising how much the kids really focus on that empathy piece. This is the slide that we don't show the kids until they give the presentation. It's got all positive remarks from their teachers and other trusted adults in the school. And a lot of times this is the slide where we get some tears and some emotion. And then we always end with, "What are you? What are you good at? And what are some of your hopes for the future?" So that's the presentation. Their entire pride staff is invited to that presentation. We have really good conversation and answer questions also at the end. At the end of the presentation, we also go into our reentry plan. And the first part of the plan is for the student, just solidifying what they're going to do to make sure that they stay safe and that others stay safe within their school. We talk a little bit about those non-exclusionary discipline attempts that we've done. We know that that came through the state a couple years ago, so we make sure that we talk about that with kids who have parents. And then if the parent is able to attend, we also have them to allow some of those arrangements that we have as we wrap up that presentation and then have them sign that they've been there. That restorative conversation, that behavior contract, that ask for needed support, and then that reassurance are all things that help them be successful as they reintegrate back into our school. A little bit about the data. We pulled a few numbers just so you can kind of see. So the numbers that you see in green or in blue are from this year and we're not done with the year, of course. So this is our first year for Pride Academy. So far this year, we had 36 students that have been through Pride and only three of those students have been back in Pride again for something different. Last year, we had 59 students that had ISS and this year, we've only had six students in ISS. 15 students repeated ISS last year. We had zero kids repeat ISS this year. Last year, we had four kids that were in out-of-school suspension. This year, we had one student and that student has not repeated out-of-school suspension. And then last year, we had one expulsion. This year, we have zero. Do you have any questions for us? This was not something we thought of together. I was actually at a principal's conference last year and went to Rochester Middle School, did something similar to this, and said, "Here, copy. Do what you want." And we made it our own and called it our own. And we are grateful for that because we feel like it's been very successful and it's something that Tessa and I have been looking for. So we can't take credit for the program completely, but it's a great addition to our school.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. Who and how do you go through the process of finding the right path for the student? If the Pride is the place for them to go or is the school suspension still the option?
Give me the states. And so the first time is always Pride.
Okay, always.
So they always do Pride first.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
What is your sense of feedback from students and parents on this program?
I love that question because that's kind of the next layer that we're going to embed into the program. So is that student feedback and parent feedback? And then also, we would like to be able to follow up with kids. So after they've entered the program and everything's going well, how are we still supporting them? A week out, two weeks out, three weeks out, a month out, and so on. So we're developing that part of it. So really good question and we're like at the cusp of that right now.
Anyone else? That's good. Okay, thanks, Tony and Tessa. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Approval of Agendas. First thing I'm going to ask for is we move 4.6, the Service Co-op Contracts, to 7.0 for Other Business for some discussion tonight. So I would need a motion to move that to Other Business.
It's all moved.
Motion by Ann.
Seconded.
Seconded by Eric. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So now I need approval of the Consent Agenda and Main Agenda with the modification to the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Matt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ann. All those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 3.0, Approval of Minutes from January School Board Meetings, Special School Board Meetings in February, and Committee Meetings, 3.1 and 3.2. Need a motion?
It's all moved.
Motion by Ann.
Seconded.
Seconded by Matt. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Then we need approval, 4.0, Consent Agenda with the changes that were made.
It's all moved.
Motion by Ann.
Seconded.
Seconded by Erin. All those in favor of the Consent Agenda with the changes made, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, 5.0, Main Agenda. 5.1, Monthly Financial Overview. And that will go to Carmen.
So in front of you guys, you should have the revenue expenditures for the period ending January 31st, 2025. As you'll notice on that report, it has the actual for this year and it compares to the prior year. So you can kind of determine where we're at. We are seven months into the fiscal school year. Our collected revenues are running on track to where we were last year at this time. Currently, we're at 54.14% compared to last year's 50.14%. Our expenditures are also on track with last year, with our current 52.23% this year compared to 54.99% last year at the same time. There have been no unusual revenues or expenditures at this point. Things are moving along as expected. I would say maybe we're still kind of right around that 50%. Last month, we were at that 50%. We haven't seen a lot of increase. Some of our stuff is due to, like, our expenditures aren't as high due to, like, lack of snow removal, which has been a good thing, so. And this is all based on our budget numbers, so based on the budget that you guys approved at the beginning of the year and it's just comparing to that.
Okay, any questions? 5.2, Approved Second Reading of Policy 213, School Board Committees. John?
So with Policy 213, there were the adjustments that were made on there. And one other adjustment that was made was we removed Section 4G because it was duplicating from what was and creating some confusion. So with that, it should be ready to go. That should be all the changes and we would recommend approval of Policy 213.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the second reading of Policy 213, School Board Committees.
Motion by Matt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Erin. All those in favor to approve Policy 213, School Board Committees, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, 5.3, Approved First Reading of Policy 522, Sex Nondiscrimination Policy, Grievance Procedure and Process.
So this was at the Instructional Committee and based on a change due to federal court vacating, the Federal 24 Final Rule on Title 29, MSBA has sent out Model Policy 522, which was the policy that was put in place based on the final rule of 2020. And so MSB is recommending to approve this as a replacement to the policy that was approved a year ago based on the federal court decision. So the recommendation was for approval. And the model policy is exactly what MSBA put out other than on page one where we had to put in the Title IX Coordinator and those that work with that individual.
Was this instructional?
Instructional, yep.
I move to approve the policy.
Motion by Ann.
Seconded.
Seconded by Matt. Is there any further discussion?
Point of clarification, Title IX, not 29, correct?
Title IX, yes.
Okay.
Did I say 29?
You did.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay.
Yeah. It's Policy 522 and it's based on Title IX.
And this is because of a federal court ruling that we have to adjust what we were to go back to where we were at.
Correct.
Okay, I got a motion by Ann, seconded by Matt. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 5.4, Approved Capital Outlay Requests.
So the Operations Committee looked at this. So the total amount of requests based on working with administrators, we had $802,852.33. There is long-term facility maintenance of looking at doing $323,572.61 and then other funding projects, $353,627. With that, I brought up the issue of three items and then we had a conversation about a fourth. And so the three items were new band uniforms, which total $103,350. The other one we talked about was the high school gymnasium, sanding and resurfacing that floor, which was done roughly 15 years ago. That was $26,000. The high school auxiliary gym, and I can't remember doing it in my time here, so it was done quite a while ago, to refinish, sand and refinish that was $17,500. And the one that was discussed at the committee, which again, I don't remember the last time it was done and I'm pretty sure it was probably a number of years prior to that. And since I looked into it, we do have some water damage where boards need to replace by the door that goes out to the northeast of the middle school gym. And the quote for that is $31,000. So when I look at the numbers and where we're at, we have roughly an extra $100,000 in capital that we could cover and then the floors actually can fall under long-term facility maintenance. So we would be expending the entire capital revenue we receive and expending either out of the long-term facility maintenance or capital reserves, either one. So the total amount of expenditures, if you looked at your sheet, was 802,000. We'd be up to 980,402. So it's a matter of if you want to do the three additional things, we can cover them. I can do it within the budget. And some of them really make a lot of sense at this point and allows you to keep moving forward with dealing what is not a want but a need that needs to happen at some point in time.
So if I remember correctly, at the meeting last week, we had asked for some more information on the use of the auxiliary gym here at the high school before we made a decision on that.
I did not get anything yet, so I can't. I know it's being used a lot. It's probably being used tonight for a ballgame. It's used for practice for the lower varsity games. I know even volleyball season. So it's used a lot as the school, extra gym, and probably used daily. But as far as the schedule, I don't have that.
And I didn't think we were bringing it for approval yet tonight. Did I have that wrong? Erin and Matt? I thought discussion but not approval?
Well, I felt that was still on the slate to be done from the way I left the meeting. And quite frankly, I suggest that we do proceed with doing it or else we're going to put ourselves in the same situation we are with the middle school gym, where we have neglected to upkeep that and we're in a dramatic state of repair. So, and this floor has not been done for, most likely, since it was put in 20-plus years ago. So I support doing the entire project as proposed.
I would dare to bet that auxiliary gym has darn near as much use as the main gym, which has got to be close.
It's used a lot, whether it's by it on a daily basis or a lot of activities.
To answer Darla's question, I think that we agreed that we needed to have discussion as a full board on capital outlay. I don't know that we were clear on whether or not it was going to be brought to a vote tonight.
Mr. Chairman, a question on the middle school project from Mr. Langard. Would that be the entire gymnasium floor, not taking the separator out and doing the whole?
Entire?
Entire thing.
Square footage, yep.
Right. And potentially it could be more just given the potential water damage elsewhere or?
Based on the number and the estimate he gave me, because this was kind of quick, between when I visited with you, I had to push to get the quote. I think he allowed for
Sure.
coverage of it. Based on the number, because I thought it was going to be a little less than half, but it wasn't. And I didn't know about the damage when I first talked to, or had forgotten, I don't remember, about that northeast corner where, before we replaced the door, we had water damage in that area.
Was that like from before the roof was replaced or how did the water damage?
That was before the door was replaced, yep.
Before the door was, how did the water get in the building, though?
It was an old door. We replaced that door, I want to say, seven or eight years ago. And it had been leaking, so that's what-
So it's an external door?
Yes, an external door, yep.
Has leadership from the middle school weighed in on the importance or value of the middle school floor project being done?
Did they leave? They're sitting right over there. I would tell you, they believe it's an important piece of their facility. It's used daily, just like most of the gymnasiums, and all day long, so. But you could ask them. It's used for practices in the evenings or later as well, so it's been used a lot. It's probably one of the gyms when, what I call the community uses, that's not used as much for community use, but it's used by our programming a lot, so.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the capital outlay requests?
I move to approve.
Motion by Matt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ann. Any further discussion?
I just want to- I just want to clarify, is, it's just the capital outlay or the four additional items, or one?
Additional items, the whole project as presented at 980,402?
980,402, yep.
That's my, my motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the capital outlay request as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
One, Darla?
Two.
Two, okay. Motion still passes. Okay, 5.5, approve the 2025-26 NCIC budget.
So, again, this would have been at the Operations Committee. The budget approval number is $1,156,232, and that's, we're one of six districts, so that's our number for our district we're approving, and that would be the budget that gets submitted to the Department of Education. There is a deadline to have it submitted before the end of the month, so that would require your approval tonight. And the recommendation was for approval.
Move to approve the 2025-2026 NCIC budget.
Motion by Matt.
Second.
Aaron, was that you? Motion, or seconded by Aaron. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the 25-26 NCIC budgets, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 5.6, approve the APAC, American Indian Parent and Advisory Committee Compliance Report.
This is a report that is required by the state of Minnesota. It's a report that Mrs. Hagan meets with this committee and goes through everything, and it's basically a pretty simple report that you as a board approve and move forward. So, it's in one of those annual things that has to happen. So, the recommendation is for approval.
I'll move to approve the APAC report.
Motion by Aaron. Seconded by Eric. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the APAC compliance report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 5.7, approve the new superintendent contract. Carmen and I will take this, I guess. Carmen, go ahead.
We negotiated with Mr. Heidkamp, a three-year superintendent contract. The salary for the first year is $180,000, the second year is $185,000, with the third year, $190,000. Just a few other benefits to point out, we approved a 7,500 district match for his 403B annually, 25 days of vacation, 11 holidays, and 26 days, which is comparable to our other administrative staff.
The 7,500 was a match of what he's
A match, yep, a match to his tax shelter annuity, his 403B.
And the technology fee, right?
So, yep, he'll have a technology. Actually, his technology is for his cellphone. It's a cellphone reimbursement. He doesn't want an actual phone. He wants the reimbursement for his phone, which goes more with IRS regulations, so.
Did you all receive the contract? I thought it went pretty smooth early.
Yeah, he was very reasonable to negotiate with.
I think he kind of based his salary request on what he felt the gap should be between him and our assistant superintendent. So, that was kind of hard to press him on that. And that's a three-year contract, obviously.
I move to approve the contract.
Motion by Ann.
Seconded.
Seconded by Darla. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the new superintendent contract, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 5.8, approve an adjusted easement. Is this with the watershed, I'm guessing?
Correct, yeah. So, with the watershed, they are, have created a new plan based on the DNR having issued with their last plan, and so, they created three alternatives. What the watershed would like to do is alternative three in the information you received, which requires a little addition of easement on the north end of the project, and it edges over into the 80 acres that the board had purchased. A discussion with the Operations Committee and this overall review of it, the recommendation was to approve an easement, and they would then start doing the paperwork and begin moving forward with that as the plan.
Any signs on if this project will still take place this year? Are they still having permitting issues, or will this take care of that?
Once they move this forward to the DNR, the likelihood of, who knows where they're going to land. The DNR has been less cooperative on this project, less than cooperative, and, yeah, the timeline, they kind of are still on the same timeline, but that would be a false start in working and hopefully completed by the end of the summer of '26.
And they need more of an easement to do more dirt work, right?
Dirt work, yeah, and have access to that regularly to make sure it's working correctly.
Need a motion for the easement.
I move to approve an adjusted easement to the Krelschine Pond Project, Alternative Three.
Motion by Aaron.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, one question from Mr. Langard. If, I couldn't quite find if it is indicated here, but I think it'd be beneficial, if at all possible, to encourage the embankments to be passable for a potential trail, if there was to be a cross-country trail at some point put on the property. I would certainly encourage us to be sure they're wide enough so they're, but I couldn't see an actual width as presented, but if you could, I would encourage discussion of that so they can be longer-range used for that purpose.
Sure. Yeah, it's, based on the drawings, it's hard to tell.
Yeah. Thank you.
We've been talking about this project for a lot of months, and we had approved this project in the past, but then they couldn't get clearance for the project that we passed to happen. And now, there were three alternative projects presented to us, and this Alternative Three option is the most efficient and effective when it comes to like trying to achieve the goals of these ponds and reducing yuck in the lake. So, it seems logical to move forward with the more, with the most efficient, like next best alternative, and it doesn't seem like it's going to have any, you know, any additional burdens to us as a school district in terms of land use.
What was the reason for the redo? Was it something about the depth? Was a concern of the original?
No, the original concern was downstream flooding, if the dam would break. To this day, I still can't see, based on the drawing the DNR showed versus the impact that the engineer had shown, I saw very little difference in the two drawings of the impact. I don't know, either I'm missing something, or, I don't know. But I also understand the DNR wanted to, is not happy about this project, and potentially is putting up barriers for it, so. They would prefer to see this meandering big ditch in there, which doesn't remove enough example phosphorus to account for what they're trying to accomplish. I have a whole lot to say, but I probably, politically, probably shouldn't do that.
Okay, we have a motion by Aaron, seconded by Matt. All those in favor of the adjusted easement, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 5.9, LTFM bonding for high school renovations.
So, this was talked at the Operations Committee. They wanted to have a conversation with the entire board. I did give you a piece of paper that Baird had provided to me yesterday, I think it And if you look at it, it shows you the term of borrowing, the estimated borrowing, and then it goes right through down to the bottom of the actual potential impact on taxpayers. And as you can see, it at least gives you an idea for residential, commercial, it has no tax impact, whereas for Ag Homestead and Ag Non-Homestead, it actually has a decrease impact if you were to consider doing an LTFM bond. So, tonight, that's only a discussion item. If you want to consider and move forward with something, if you remember, or the Operations Committee received, we have an elevator at the north end of the north wing that must get done this year, which is part of the capital outlay, but it can be moved to the LTFM. Their building renovations are listed in there as far as the metal panel and windows, which is roughly $1.4 million, tuck pointing, sill repair of $64,000, upgrades to finishes, built-ins was $2 million estimate, and then roofing replacement. The committee did talk about potentially asking another company to get, put together a quote. I have not addressed that one just yet, but that's kind of where we were talking when we were looking at doing a bigger project related to the high school. So, it's up for discussion. That's the information kind of you have. The estimate that ICSS did for construction was just a little over $4.4 million, and then with soft costs, bonds issuance, and contingency, it was at $5.8 million.
What was under the $2 million update that you were just talking about?
$2 millions was upgrades to finishes and built-ins, so like all the univets and the classrooms would come out, we'd address the flooring, new doors. It'd be upgrading the 1960s stuff in the classroom.
But nothing with the outside, with the windows or panels?
Yeah, it'd be new windows and new metal panels. Those metal panels, I don't, I can't tell you when they were, that was kind of a 70s energy efficiency, where they took windows out and put metal panels in trying to keep the heat in, and they're getting to the end of their life, or are at the end of their life.
Any more discussion from you guys? Questions, thoughts?
So, so we're, we're at this point right now because we've taken out a portion of the plans A, B, and C that we had talked about from the referendum and all of the high school renovations, and this sliver is improving the, the north wing, updating it, making it more energy efficient, fixing things that are broken. In the Operations Committee meeting, we talked about how there is money in the LTFM for us to take on this project, but we would be tying our hands to a certain extent down the road if we take this on. And it would, this would take about 60% of our LTFM funding available, and we talked about the value of having our new superintendent weigh in on this project to see if it is in alignment with his vision for how we're spending our LTFM funding. In my opinion, I think we do need to make those improvements to the north wing, and I feel like it's, it's among the top priorities, but I do think that there is value in including Mr. Heidkamp in our conversations. So, I feel like it would be wise to get at least one additional quote from a different company and be able to include him in conversations early on in his tenure and hope to have a plan in place to address these issues sooner rather than later.
When does the elevator need to be done by? Is there a drop dead date on that?
I don't have a drop dead date, but that, that one, I can't, I need to start moving that one forward. And it's in the capital outlay, but it's, that's got to get done this summer. It absolutely has to, or it'll be shut down and it won't be available, and then our second story in the north wing will not be accessible.
But we just voted first on capital outlay to approve that, right?
Yeah. Okay. So, the $160,000 comes off of here that is associated to the elevator.
Mr. Chairman, I struggle with a lot of things here, too, but of a project that does not include what our biggest space need, and that is the cafeteria space. You know, that's where I would struggle with us moving forward with a plan that didn't address that need as we have it right now. We have so many, I appreciate the idea of having our new superintendent in the discussions, but I also think we need to take the time to bring everything off the top shelf and all the binders, and put all of our plans out on the table, and look at everything that needs to be done. And I think we can, as a board, can do prioritizing and be prepared from our perspective to involve him with that discussion, but we need to be on this A page, because there's a lot of things that we got to do, and we're just having less money daily to accomplish those tasks. So, I guess I'd like to see us bring everything out and really try to do a forward look and then engage Mr. Heidkamp in that discussion.
I know there's been talks of maybe at some point a special meeting, is that correct, John, where you can maybe, we could put this on the agenda? If that's the direction you guys want to go into this discussion tonight?
We talked about these, and I agree with Matt and with Aaron, and I threw out the ceiling in the gym as well as being a safety hazard at this point in time if tiles are falling, that we need to look at that. So, we, we do have a list of priorities. I think we have to force rank them and get on the same page. I support getting more bids, more estimates, to see what we can do.
Okay, and if you guys are okay, let's just move this to a topic on a special meeting when that date is determined, but I'm guessing that's coming pretty soon. when that date is determined, but I'm guessing that's coming pretty soon, so is that all right?
Can we just make sure that everything that comes off that top shelf is LTFM eligible and not referendum items?
Well, this is what is LTFM eligible?
Correct, but if we're looking at the gym ceiling, which I'm not saying that that's not appropriate, I'm just saying, let's just make sure when Matt suggested, we bring back other items to make sure that everything is LTFM eligible when we look at that.
I think the discussion is good, though, to look at all the options. I mean, I think it's fine to say, here's the ways we can and cannot finance these projects.
Yeah.
In my perspective, if it's a discussion, let's throw everything out that in different ways we can do it. I guess I'd rather not, we just...
Just take a hard look at everything.
Let's put everything, all the needs, and then assign to where the buckets they qualify in.
The folks that do those estimates will also provide options there, too, which would be helpful.
I would like to see more estimates before our special meeting.
I didn't hear you, Aaron.
I would like to see more additional estimates before our special meeting, so we have some comparison points.
And we might have to meet more than once, then, because I think we have, I think we have to find, whittle the list down. I don't see the spending of money or the asking of someone to provide us estimates, knowing that we can't afford to do these projects in the foreseeable future. I think we're better off going through it all, developing our priority list, and then ask for a better estimate on those, is my feeling.
Prioritize which items, and then look for estimates?
Right, and then we're legitimately ready to move forward with those, rather than overwhelmed with a whole list of new estimates that we aren't going to act on. I don't know if we really gained a lot by getting those, that energy put into that.
So how much is in our LTFM account now? Is it eight?
You, no. No. LTFM reserves are...
How are we figuring?
The undesigned was the dollar amount.
The undesigned, let me find my sheet, and I'll be able to get close.
Because at the referendum, weren't we talking 6 million? How did we come to that?
Yeah. The LTFM right now, you have 1.6 million annually. We get 1.4, and you have to remember, you spent 1.7 on the Prairie Elementary roof already. So between the two, I have to be able to fund that roof. And then in capital, we have about 875,000 in reserve. So, but I think, and based on approving the capital outlay, LTFM that's in there, we're spending another 400,000 of that, so we're at 2.1 million. So when you talk about what's left of LTFM, the number dropped pretty quick. And again, the original plan was to do 1.1 million of the Prairie roof, and it ended up at 1.7. So I can keep track of all this and keep it moving, and you have the action plan that lists out a lot of items, I've given you other documents with items. Some might be considered wants, but I would tell you, most of them are needs at this point. There's not extravagant things in there. So we can break that all out. It's much the same as on this list. The orange is what is covered out of what you approved in capital outlay tonight. So we're making headway, that's the good news, and we're addressing what's needed. The bad news is, there's just not this endless pot that exists out there. And some of it, there is 18.5 million dollars in assigned account, and for some projects, you can utilize those dollars to accommodate addressing some of the needs. Example, which is already approved, it was approved a year and a half ago, is putting turf on the middle school. It's just, I put that on hold, it's sitting on hold, because I wanted to make sure we addressed the priorities that you wanted to accomplish. And maybe that is the priority.
Did we have a motion in a second to do that?
The middle school turf? Oh, yeah. That was quite a while ago.
Yeah, I kind of...
So it just, when you were working on the referendum to do classroom additions and everything, I put it on hold at that time. So I haven't done anything with it.
But more than likely to do some of this, we're going to have to look at using some of that assigned general fund.
Depending on what you're going to do. I can put numbers to different projects, but you're accomplishing a lot of what I'll call needs by what you approved in capital outlay tonight, but there are a lot of other needs, and everybody's view of what's needed, the priority might be different, depending on who you're talking to.
So going back to what Matt said, let's have a meeting and take a look at those needs next. Prioritize those needs, correct, Matt?
Just my thought.
And then decide what you guys want to get estimates on, to see what the cost is going to be and how we're going to fund those projects. Is everybody kind of on that page? Okay with that, or?
And again, I'm going to tell you, my goal is to be useful to you as a board and try and get some of this stuff as a board, ready to move forward, so it's not on Mr. Heidkamp's plate when he comes, so he's not overwhelmed. Because that could easily happen, and I want to be of assistance to you guys and Mr. Heidkamp, not try and move any of these forward just because.
Okay, is everybody okay with the plan to reevaluate? Okay, moving on, reports. Superintendent's report, John?
Yeah, I'll try and be relatively quick, and I'm not going to go through it, but I gave you a fall survey summary that MSBA did, and really, it addresses looking at the finances, the property and casualty insurance, and example, it talks about the decreases or increases that occurred. Long and the short, it's a lot of good information. It was a really good survey conducted by MSBA, and they provided a lot of good information. So it is, it's something I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to look at, and it's for your information to look at. The second item I wanted to address is, I testified last Thursday on a bill that Senator Weber put forth for roughly six districts, I believe, maybe seven, in regards to the sales tax on materials for construction projects. So in our case, that would be the intermediate school, the community education facility, the new storage building, the parking lot at the middle school. It has on here, construction for the high school or remodeling, so if you were to do something prior to 2028, you would be eligible not to have to pay sales tax on that if this passes. Construction of a new ice arena, that is actually a city project, so that really doesn't qualify. Installation of turf field on the middle school, which would qualify, that's the materials. Demolition of West, reconstruction of Trojan Field was on there, and then improvements to the Learning Center gymnastics facility. Long and the short, if we could collect on pretty much what we've done, you're talking over $2 million of reimbursement that would occur. Some of these projects aren't done, so they would qualify when you did them, as long as they're done before 2028. So each of the districts testified, this is a real, what I call, if gets approved in whatever by the legislature, which there is history where they approved this for a couple schools already, so I'm crossing my fingers, it was laid over for further consideration. Good news. We'll see if the funding comes through. Those are the two items I had.
Instructional Committee report, Lori's...
Chairman, can I ask a question of Mr. Langard first, please?
Yeah.
If you could update us on the traffic situation by the middle school and your thoughts on that?
I don't have a lot of updates related to it, other than I do know the county commissioners did approve making that an always stop, which I asked for probably 10 years ago, and multiple times since then, and I'm pretty excited about the fact that it's an always stop. The only issue I have with it being an always stop now is they have three lanes coming from the east going west, and that would be a little concern of mine. But anything at this point, in my view, is an improvement.
Is there a timing for that?
I don't know the timing. I haven't had any communication from the county on it, and we haven't had a city, county, school, college meeting for a while.
Thank you.
I'll ask one, too, then. How about the ice arena? Have you heard, is, are they supposed to get, City Council's supposed to get bids on doing the current arena soon, or?
They are working on getting estimate of what it costs to bring the old arena up to, I won't say new condition, but much better condition, and they're working on that. They did not anticipate that they would have that till into March, maybe early April.
The $5 million we have set aside would not apply if they just upgrade the existing structure?
They, based on the school board's motion, if they refurbished the old ice arena, you would not be committed to putting any money into that. It was only for a new facility.
And I know we put a five-year timeline on that. Is there any wiggle room on that, if they move forward with something that doesn't require that $5 million? Do we have to hold that $5 million for five years?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, no matter what? Okay.
That was your commitment, so I'd say yes.
Any other questions for John? 1.2 Instructional Committee, Lori is gone. Man, you're on it, Eric, you're on it.
I think we've covered everything.
Yeah, we've covered everything.
1.3 Operations, Aaron, you chair that?
Matt.
Matt's chair, that's right.
Another thing, Mr. Chairman, was the discussions happening with the city of Willington at evaluating potential ball fields, soccer fields, et cetera, and some progress being made on a meeting time and trying to look at a master plan that fits all programs and cohesively work together.
Everything else is good, then?
Oh, yeah.
Other than the weather? Okay, other reports, anybody got anything?
I just want to extend gratitude to district leadership and administration for the statement to the public that was issued today, just upholding our commitments to fostering a safe and inclusive environment for all students. So thank you to the school district for emphasizing the importance of this, and I look forward to seeing the district carrying out these pillars of education and inclusion.
Okay, anything else? Okay, 7.0 Other Business, this is where we moved the Southwest to the Central Cooperative Contract to, I had talked to John last week about moving this to the March operations, and then a full board agenda item in March. I think there's still some more confusion, so discussion clarification on this contract is what we're looking for right now.
So the Southwest Service Co-op, by March 1, we have to provide them notice on if we are not going to utilize, example, a behavior specialist or a psychologist, we have to tell them they're under the same timelines as a school district for non-renewal or ULA or termination. So that's the deadline for notifying them if we're going to change our services in that contract. The actual contract has to be backed by April 1. And so what happens is, in the past, we may have needed some more time, or we may have needed to shift, say, a part-time back to the service co-op, and they've worked with us in March. It has never been a conversation of a penalty. They work with us really well, and all districts in the service co-op. We actually are looking to try and hire a couple positions, and if we can get that, then we could lessen the cost of the service co-op contract. Likewise, what's not in this contract, and I have to talk with them, is the health and safety management services. We have not utilized them. We've used our own contract for, with a company for a very long time. The company ended here about a year and a half ago with no notice, just disappeared on us, and so now we are using a company that's under the service co-op contract, which is at a lesser rate than their normal rate they charge, and so we'll be adding that to this as well. So this contract, and that's part of the reason why I sent it to all of you, is not 100% accurate, and I'm trying to work out those pieces of the puzzle right now. And hopefully, by March 1, I'll have some of that taken care of, so that we can notify them if we are not going to use a service with them. So a couple of those services, more than likely, will be in the special education area if we can hire a couple people on our own. We did interview a speech pathologist today, and they're working on setting up another speech pathologist interview as soon as we can get it accomplished. So potentially, we would need minimal support from the service co-op or no support, so that could go away. So we're still working on a couple of those pieces to get this finalized. And with that, then, March will be fine to approve the final of the service co-op contract, and we'll get that taken care of. But just so you know, we're going to be talking with them about some of the potential changes, so they're aware of that.
And it will be discussed at committee March.
Correct.
Any other questions about the contract? Any other questions about the contract? Okay. 8.0 future business. I know we've talked about a special meeting. Is that maybe something in March, April we would consider doing?
Yeah, I would say.
If you guys are aware.
Yeah.
A special meeting or a work session?
Work session.
I mean, the difference is that with a special meeting, we can vote on things, and in a work session, we can't, right?
Correct. And it may depend on how quick you want to move things forward, or even Mr. Heidkamp's availability of being able to connect with him, and so we'll see. There would be an advantage of you just having a special meeting versus a work session, but you, we could do it either way.
Yeah, because you're going to want to vote on a few things that we're probably going to discuss. Yeah, probably a few special meetings. Anybody else got anything for future business? 9.0 adjournment. We are adjourned.